Issues we have and future goals that we have for the city. So people at home watching, if we say we're gonna spend a million dollars here, we're really not spending it, we're just talking about it, we're not spending it tonight. It's a wish list, kind of. Do you guys wanna go, just wanna go down a list of items, or?
So the three items, or the two items that I knew council requested beyond this work session would be first, future capital needs, the second one was a continuation of the discussion on rental inspections, and then anything else that you guys wanna bring up. So I left the agenda pretty vague like that with future capital needs, rental inspections, and then other. Just for everyone's information, I did provide you something on your desk. The first page is just a list of the 2025 capital improvements that were cut from the 2025 budget. So those were budget requests that were cut out of the 25 budget. I have to say, my disclaimer on the second page is that these are just items that I know council has discussed at one point from sometime between 2014 and now. Those dollar amounts are not, you should not use those as gospel, it's just a number that we tried to plug in to kinda look at what all the open needs were. So just please remember that that is very, very, very rough estimate on dollar amounts on page two. It's just based on what we could put together, so. And some don't have a dollar amount. There were a couple things added too, from when we looked at this at budget hearing time, a couple things that have come up since then. So mainly the freight elevator safety improvements, and then the first means signal lights, if council decides to move forward with that in the future. So I just wanna make sure I gave my little disclaimer on my handout, that that is a very rough estimate, in case anyone is referring to it in the future.
I do have a question. During the year that I served as the liaison for Park and Rec, we did a facilities tour, and we looked at Jeremy's storage place, that the building that is, either the ground is sinking or the building is rising. Is that the?
On the second page, under Park and Rec facilities, and it's.
The shared facility?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wondered. So tell me why that's a million dol, I mean, I know that's a stupid question. Why is that a million dollars?
It would be far larger without what you're seeing there. It would be a combination shop for the things that he's compiling, the Fisher Building, which.
Kevin, please, can you remember?
I'm sorry.
It would be a combination building to work with what he's currently got out of the Fisher Building, that little building currently has.
And what's the, where's the Fisher Building?
That's the one out north of, east of the soccer complex by the airport.
Oh, okay, okay, yep, yep, yep.
And he does some mechanic work inside of the arena as well, so it's kind of shared between several spaces.
And so what do we have in that Fisher Building? I guess I wasn't aware of what was contained in that.
In the Fisher Building, there are things that are stored for Public Works, in terms of salt storage for what's used on the streets, and a number of other pieces of equipment for both them and us.
That are like more seasonal kinds of things?
Yes.
I think it's important, though, that that building wasn't just for parks, it was also relocating the traffic department over there. So it's probably bigger, a bigger facility than when council first talked about it.
Right.
Six years ago?
Yeah, I'm glad that we clarified that, because I was like, gosh, that little building. But if we're gonna do more with it, I mean, I feel like that's an important thing that obviously has been neglected for a long time, and that Fisher Building isn't in great shape either. Am I correct about that? Like, would we take that building down as well, and just?
If you were to take that down, you wouldn't be able to replace its use with just this building here, it would take more. The salt sand storage that's out there, there's other things that Public Works and other departments are using it, it's not just Park and Rec.
Okay, okay.
And there's some good portions of that building, and there's some not so good portions.
Okay, I see, okay.
We did remove the section, right, that was falling down?
Yeah, there was like a little, call it a garage or lean-to on the back, that'd be like a sales stall, we tore that down. We're working at possibly removing the extension off to the east side, there's a bunch of asbestos in the ceiling. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, that's, I mean, I feel like that's something that, I don't know how many times we can push it out, but that's something that we probably need to consider at some point.
So Stephanie, can you remind us of the amount again? Is it 1.6, or?
For what?
The additional amount?
Okay, I actually, let me pull this up. That's a myth for me, I thought it might show better if I did it as a PowerPoint, so that's why I switched over. So the 2025 sales tax budget that we have passed right now in the 2025 appropriation ordinance is 13.4 million. 2023, our collections were 14.5, so it was about 1.1 million dollars above our 2025 budget, and we are currently 6% above 2023. So depending on where we end the year, you're gonna have anywhere from 1.1 to maybe 1.6 above budget. I did, just for information as well, I did go through budgets again today, we're at 92% of our fiscal year completed, but keep in mind, sales tax is only one part of our revenue budget. We also went up in interest income, I don't know what's gonna happen with interest rates, but we could potentially not hit that target that we had planned for 2025 budget. The reason why I say that is I don't want everyone to think we just automatically have 1.6 that we could add in, because you should look at the total revenue budget. So you can see for revenue, we're about 90% collected for the year, we've only got 57% of property tax, but that's because there's another payment that's not included in there. And then sales tax were about 95%. And then I did look at what's remaining for expenditures, and really, if you took out those major projects at the end, you know, we're gonna be within our expenditure budgets and probably just slightly over our revenue budget as a whole.
So, and that makes total sense on the sales tax, but with the grocery tax that we did not originally include?
That is the amount that I left off the sales tax budget, was the 1.1, right.
That was for the sales tax, okay.
Yep, and we left it off, and actually, we left it out of this year's budget too, because there had been discussion in the legislature, so it wasn't included in 2024. That's why our 2024 budget is lower than our actual questions this year. But there you can see, like I said, at least 1.1 million, maybe up to 1.6 with your 6% increase that we're seeing in '24 above '23. Does that help? Yeah, if you look at our budget here for 2024, we budgeted 13.1, and we are gonna come in, you know, we're above last year's level, so we're gonna have an extra, probably one, over a million dollars above budget in revenue for 2024, and then you could anticipate, as long as, like, you know, interest rates don't go to zero or something like that, that we would likely have that same amount in 2025. Does that help? Okay.
One other clarification, on the list here, I noticed today, we had Cadwell infield turf at 350, and I know we backed that down, but is, but don't we have the infield in the 25 budget?
We have part of it, we have the drain tile part, but not the actual turf.
And grass.
Yeah, that, what's the?
Redo the infield, the grass, and then, and then the drain, the one we had bucked down, that's over here.
Okay.
We don't have the, it's the dirt that's actually like artificial turf, right?
Or whatever they decided to go with.
Right.
Oh, that's not, so we're not, okay, all right.
Where it says cut 350, I think it's 220, when it?
240, it's right, 240, I believe is where we're at. I can pull that up. Because if you remember, at the end of the budget hearings, we actually took out the light poles at Cadwell that we were gonna replace, and instead just did a design, and then we added in infield reshaping and drain tile installation. And that amount is at 220.
And that doesn't include any turf?
Nope, that was an additional cost.
I should just say also, as just a general statement, not that I'm encouraging council
anyway, or whichever, but let's say that there is something like the turf that you wanted to add back into next year, that's not something we do in '24, it's something you guys would give me direction, and then we would add that for the supplemental appropriations that we do after the beginning of the year in 2025. Because we can't, you can't amend that 2025 budget till we're in that budget year.
Do you guys wanna keep going down different items on this, or do you wanna just throw them out as you see them, or it makes no difference to me?
Now, tell me about the pool resurfacing.
Tell me about the pool resurfacing.
I can go through that, you mean, you mean the slides?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah.
Did I say pool, I meant slides, yes.
So the mayor had, and I can't remember the name, you'll have to tell me, someone came and did a test area.
Mad Garage.
Okay, Mad Garage came and did a test area of our outdoor pool, they haven't been.
It was the, it was the slides, the slides are like super sun faded, and you can go in there and basically buff them, and then if you want, we can ceramic coat them, it's supposed to make them look like new for like 10 years, they do it on tractors and stuff.
Thirty thousand dollars.
How much was the number?
Thirty.
I don't think it was that much, was that?
It was in the 15 to 20 range for the outdoor pool, she added in the rec center as well, so it'd be both slides, and we.
That's the slide.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah. And you could buff it for probably just half of that, and it'd look good for a couple years, just like what it looked like new, so.
And do you remember what buffing it?
Very little, I mean, it was like 5 to 7,000, I feel like our guys could just do it too, it's not that big of a deal, you put a little compound on there, and you hit it with a buffing wheel, and it just makes them look like new again. Ceramic coating's different, that's more expensive. He came to me with that idea, so.
Yeah. But we did know that it likely should be done in the future, so that's why we showed it listed. I know council had discussion on those tennis boards, five through 12 during budget hearings, I can't remember, I think Kevin maybe, maybe gave me that number of the estimate, yeah, okay, good, I don't think I came up with that one, sorry about that.
I think one of the things that is probably something we need to do sooner than later is look at the ice arena roof, and figure out what permanent solution we can come up with for that. I'm guessing at this point, it's going to include tearing out all the insulation and replacing all of that to prevent the leaks that are currently happening there. And then what does that look like if we're able to, and we're redoing the insulation, is there a possibility that we could look at a way to make it so one of the rinks could at least be used year round?
On that note, Kevin, is there a way we can change the, is it in the pitch of the roof that's causing our issues, or is it just ice backup?
The one building, the original building comes like this, and the addition is really a flat roof, so it's the, where they connect, the water ice backs up in there, and there's not a nice seal to it. As far as what it is underneath there, obviously the insulation's got some moisture in it, and finding those precise leak points, I think has been a challenge for the contractors going in and looking at it. Ideally, I don't know what it was that palace builders had looked at, but to make that all one slope would seem like it would make sense, but that would take some architecture work and a lot of structural work to get that to go that way.
Well, I think it's worth looking at, because it's been a problem for quite some time. When it was built, I kinda scratched my head about it a little bit, it was so flat.
Also, maybe to give a little more information, Mr. Goldhammer too, is that, wouldn't, oh boy, that would have been in 2014, maybe 15, we actually, the city did hire an outside consultant from Minnesota, we had them come and look at the ice arena, because we were kinda being told it was the design, and then we're being told it was the construction, so we wanted a third party to tell us where the issues were. They gave us a list of 20 different recommendations of improvements to do, some of the issues were on the, and this is more about the year round, or the extended ice. They gave us a list of improvements, we did some improvements in the air exchange, we did, because we were also having.
Condensation.
Yeah, condensation over the ice rink itself. We did some improvements to the exterior envelope, but the, one of the final or the most expensive or the biggest recommendation, they said, if you want extended ice, the new addition is less able to handle extended ice than the original ice arena, and that you may just need to start over to be able to get what you originally thought you were gonna get out of that addition on the ice arena.
I agree, something needs to be done, because it's leaks, I've been on the council since 2017, and it's leaked ever since I've been on there, I mean, that's.
I did follow up with Jeremy Nielsen after the last rain we had on that Monday, and he, the good thing is, you know, we used to have several leaks, we do have it narrowed down to now one consistent leak, so a lot of the issues have been resolved as just that final one. I don't know, Joe, if you think the roof improvement would address that last area, but that last area, I mean, they have buckets and things going to catch it throughout the way. They did pull out, Kevin said you guys pulled out, or Jeremy did, the ceiling or the wall at that point, and there wasn't moisture back there.
The locker rooms are right behind the bleachers, and the water was dripping down onto those, we pulled off the floor of the decking above those locker rooms, and the insulation out of there, and it was not wet, it was just passing through into the locker rooms, and it didn't ruin anything and create mold in between there.
As our, as the contractors have gone up there, it's, they're right now trying to figure out if the leak is on the old roof or the new roof. Right now, they think it's on the old roof that navigates down and through and into the locker rooms.
It's not just where they meet?
Correct, so they did some work on that, and they do believe that is sealed up well. Yeah, I mean, we do have an issue, like if we get a lot of snow, where the vents and stuff are set, that if the snow pushes off, it can push the vents over. So after winter, after big snow events, if we notice the snow slides, we need to get out there and look and see if any of the vents have been tore off, if any of the, we do have the snow runners up there to prevent sliding, but if it does slide, we need to look and see if those have been ripped off. It's just, it's problematic, it's a maintenance item.
Do you think if we replace the refrigeration in the ice arena, that year-round ice would be more possible?
What we're told from the consultant is, it's the envelope of the building that makes it not possible, it wasn't constructed in a way to allow for that.
And I was part of, it's been a long time, but in reality, the Hockey Association and the city came to the conclusion that probably year-round ice just wasn't what they were trying to accomplish, and, and they extended it into the springtime normally, I think it's April, but they take it down now, and that's kind of what the intent was, and then starting back up in October, so, so the year-round ice theoretically was abandoned because of the cost. So it wasn't the design, it was, it was just, they didn't feel that year-round ice was gonna be lucrative enough to have.
And I should go back to when we were talking about the extended ice, that's when the consultant said, we would be better off doing the new envelope to do the extended ice than trying to remedy with what we were working with, and they said the first ice arena, or the first sheet of ice was built better able to handle extended ice than the But, I mean, the roof, probably one of the most frequent, if you, if I were, so I've been here almost 11 years now, or going on my 11th year, and I think we get complaints about that every single year during hockey. The fact that we have buckets sitting up to catch, I mean, we've had contractors in, we hired an architect to do the fix of the flashing between the two different roofs, we still have leaks.
I got videos of it, it looks like a waterfall coming down the wall, I mean, it's, it's not good, when it starts to go, it goes.
So Joe, do you have a recommendation at this point to consider, or a couple options, or what, what would you do if you were sitting here?
I mean, if, if we were looking at a permanent fix, I think the, the best route would, to go would be to hire an architect and design a new roof.
What's your second notion?
I mean, we, if we hire someone to do that, we could at least have them, you know, our options, is if, because issues, where, even where the vents are at, and where the roof is at, every year, we're gonna have potential issues with the vents being taken off. And once, so, I mean, if, either you wait for the water to run, or you go up and look. Regardless, you're gonna have that issue with how things are situated, no matter what.
And I guess you could say we have been trying to find a different fix for at least five years, it's not working.
So just a ballpark figure estimate for the hire an architect, I don't know, either one of you?
Ten to 12% of construction.
So around 100.
And there's, there's no insurance or anything like that on that roof that would cover it? No, yes?
I think, I think all warranties have expired, our insurance, I'm not sure how that would fall into our policy is.
Stephanie, do you have the drawings of the Corn Palace?
I do. It's not very good, because I had to scan it in. So should we get background on this?
Yeah. That's pretty good for a scan, you know.
It's not too bad, I had to scan it three times to get it to work. So recently, when Robert, Robert, Robin Miller from MS, oh, no, it was Schummer, sorry, was here, the conversation was, if we can't afford to do the big project, you know, what would it look like to just look at the east half of the Corn Palace building, make sure I'm saying that right? You can see the shaded area here, you can't really see, but this is supposed to be the soft seats in the Corn Palace. The, yeah, the current soft seats, the way they're on. So what they looked at is, could you remove the stage and make bleachers that could be pushed back, that have seats on them, you know, just like you see at the Pentagon or something like that, where they're seats, but they can be folded back. So when they're folded back, you would have more floor space for a basketball court, or more floor space for a different event, or a trade show, or whatever else is happening in there. Maybe doing some remodeling in this back half of the older building here, so they just showed just general rooms, not any kind of detail, because he did, he did this at no cost, he just put together another alternative. And what would it look like with more seating? So here you see, you keep your existing soft seats, you have your side bleachers, but now with the stage gone, and kind of bumping out that building, now you have more seating on the east half of the building. Mayor, you're gonna have to jump in if I miss something, or Kevin, I can't remember everything he was talking about that day, other than this.
What'd you say, we get 22, was it 22 or 2400 extra seats?
The number's on there. You know, I didn't really think about this until today, but I don't know if that other seat, if those are all flat and level with the, like this section here? I don't think any of those are raised, because that's where another court would be, so none of those would be raised seats.
They're pushed back bleachers, he said.
Yeah, they're pushed back bleachers, then.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that is what it was.
You know, like the.
I looked at a lot of plans on the Corn Palace.
Yeah. So it would give you more flexible seating option, you could potentially leave the front half of the building, there was some headache, or heartache a little bit about doing renovations on a building that you guys just renovated, but you could potentially still do seat upgrades on the soft seats, but really, your new seating being on the east half of the building. And I think he has a picture in here, oh, and he talked about leaving the, the roof line kind of open, you take out the acoustical tile, kind of like what they showed in that original design.
So the, you have the bleachers that come out, and then above that, tell me about those upper seats.
Those were also bleachers that pushed back, I believe.
But there would be like a mesmine kind of area that would be built?
You can kinda see right here, there's a stairway up to there, or something of that sort.
So it'd be similar to what's on the soft seat side?
Probably, like I said.
More seating, actually, yeah, 2200 on that side, the other one was right now.
Some seating, something?
Yep.
Yeah, so again, he did this at no cost to the city, so it's not design plans, he just kinda wanted to show a schematic of what it could look like if you add, you know, here's your soft, or wait, these are the new seats?
Yeah.
These are the new seats, those are the soft seats, what it would, you could still kind of create that bowl effect that everybody liked of the original design, but the idea was not spending as much money as that original design was.
And I, and I don't, I don't remember, you exchanged some emails with him, you said, I'm trying to read this email that he sent, but I feel like a lot of this also included new boilers, new air conditioning, I think all of the, what I'm looking for.
Yep.
Yeah, infrastructure utility, all that stuff was included in that price.
Yep.
He, he told me eight to 10 million, but he wanted to quote me at 15, so he wasn't light, so I was like.
We've always talked about doing the soft seats, but he said, to do the soft seats, he said, leave the soft seats the way they are, because to get that pitch that you need would cost lots and lots of money. And he said, you already have the soft seats there, so you might as well leave those, put the new seating across the way, and.
And that way, as we talked, yeah, I think that's a good idea, Kevin, because that way we talked, is you don't have to do anything to the lobby that we put millions of dollars into. And I know the mayor's been looking at soft, the actual chairs themselves, and I don't know if you wanna just bring the public kind of up to speed on some of your conversations on that.
So, I got, I got a quote, thanks to Councilman Bathke, he said we should just get some seats, and then Tim also reached out to another group of people, so I got two different seats from two different people, the one that Tim had reached out to, they ended up bringing a seat that's the same as the Canary Stadium, and it sounds like for about $200, if we install them ourselves, which I talked to Jeff over at the Corn Palace, he said it would be no problem, it would take some time, you know, if we do it during the downtime or whatever, I think it's 50 bucks a chair if we have someone else install them, so we could just, it's up to you guys, but it sounds like it, 300,000 roughly for all new chairs, which isn't a crazy number, they're comfortable. I moved the chair over to the Corn Palace, so everyone can go sit on it over there, and they don't have to go to City Hall, I put a little sign out.
In a donation box.
In a donation box, yeah. That's a pretty good idea, I haven't gotten that far yet. You know, and we talked, I don't remember who it was, was it you that talked about, maybe?
Yeah, so one of the things that I had talked to Jordan about in this process is that in other facilities, when they look at redoing seating, something they allow is for people to purchase a seat, to say that this seat was donated on behalf of, or donated by, and that cost would probably increase the overall cost of the seat by $10, and so I think if you offered that out to the public for $200, that there'd be a group of interested parties that might be interested in buying a seat, if nothing to get their name affixed to a chair. name affixed to a chair in the Corn Palace.
I guess the other comment that we did have when Robin was here is, you know, if you're taking the stage out, then we would just purchase that portable stage that could be used either indoor or outdoor. And you really could set up that stage here so you have side seating and floor speeding, or you can push back the bleachers and still have it set up over here. You could have a little more flexibility in how you want to do that. But you do have to keep in mind that we have that loading dock on the... This side of the building.
Or...
Thank you. Your side of the building.
And it wouldn't be just for basketball. I mean, you could have trade shows in there. You could have darts, pool, concerts. You could, all kinds of different things you could do after that with extended floors.
Would you have to create space for storage of the stage? Because I know there's shortage on the...
So I know, I can tell you what the Denny does. Because we asked about that when I toured it a couple of years ago at a municipal league meeting. And they actually have like a semi truck that they store some of those things. And they just move it offsite. And when they're having an event, they bring it in and they unload it and they use it that way. They do that with, I can't remember what all they stored in there, but they have quite a bit of event stuff that they have in different trailers that they bring depending on the type of event.
Kind of like what Pheasant Country does when they have all their stuff in a trailer. And one night they bring it in and load it up again for the next year.
So the day that Robin was here going through this was when they were delivering chairs, some of the mayor's samples.
Chair samples.
Yeah, the chair samples. And I feel like I should say this to everybody so everyone's heard it as well. In the past, when the city has done a Corn Palace project, you've used entertainment tax as part of that debt service repayment. A civic arena is one of the allowable uses of that fund. So I guess what I had said to the council members that were there is if you ever look at doing a smaller project in the future that's more affordable than that $40 million price tag was, you know, in a couple of years, our streetscape's done, depending on what council decides with the plaza expansion is done, you could really take those funds that we've been using annually for those improvements and commit it to debt service till, so you don't have to pay as much cash upfront on these as well, on this as well.
I think another key thing with this is we get the boilers, the chillers. I mean, the stuff that needs to be fixed will get fixed.
And that was eight to 10, you said? Or 15?
That's what he said.
Eight to 10 or 15?
He said eight to 10, and then he told me 15. So it's probably 50. I don't know. But it's...
I will say...
It sounds like it's tremendously cheaper than, well, than the whole building, I guess, obviously, but...
A newer thing on our list for Corn Palace that really needs to be included if and when you do any kind of a project, maybe sooner. We do have issues with our freight elevator at the back. That's how we get all of the chairs and tables and everything up and down, the gift shop stuff up and down. Because of the, the mayor probably knows that, say this better than I do, but because of the safety concerns, because we don't have the gates and the required stuff, we can't get people to come work on it anymore. And it's really dangerous to have because someone could just open an area and you're open to the floor below. I did have Jeff reach out and ask them what it would take to get an estimate or what it would take to get this up to where people can work on it and it's meeting safety standards. And you can see there now, the estimate 285 for the work at the elevator, 265 for building work. Again, that was really rough. They just provided something so we had something to look at. You might be able to get a new freight elevator for less than that. I don't know. But I do think whenever you look at doing an improvement, we got to do something for the elevator or if something breaks, no one's going to work on it because it doesn't have the right safety mechanisms in place.
It's old.
And it's dangerous because of we don't have the gates and the things required to keep people from... So that's something that would be new, that wouldn't be discussed before when we were looking at these boiler plants, chillers, air handling units, that kind of stuff.
I guess for me personally, getting fixed, fixing the soft seating or new soft seating on the one side is a short-term thing that we could do. And then as we look towards a longer-term, bigger project, that $15 million price tag and trying to figure out how we pay for that, whether it be through the tax debt service that's already available or some other way. I do think one of the things that the Corn Palace has missed out of, missed out on is the opportunity for sponsorships. If you have the opportunity to, Jordan has done a really good job of taping off some sections where he thinks we could get increased sponsorship revenue by offering different sponsorships throughout the Corn Palace building without affecting what I would say is the ambiance of the event itself. And so that'd be something that you could consider as well as a part of this project, creating a sponsorship opportunity for local businesses and opportunities to get people's names into the Corn Palace as well.
One thing about sponsorships, our scoreboard's got to be pushing 20 years old. And when you go to Daktronics, they'll come in and sell it, but they got 100% of the right. You get a free scoreboard.
They won't do that anymore, they told us.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, that's that then. They would have 10 years ago when our contract was up, they would sell us a new one. Then they go around and sell the ads. That's how they sell their scoreboards. And then they figured about, oh, I don't know, $6,000 a year extra, $7,000 I think it was. The city got half and they got half of the extra. Then somebody dropped because of 2008, I think is when it was, 2006. Anyway, the bad economy, they only sold five-year contracts to the 10 because they were having trouble selling them. And, but if they don't do it anymore, that's not an issue.
Yeah, we inquired when our other contract was coming up, and they said they are phasing out any of those agreements and they would not look at doing that for us again. That's why we bought out the contract and sold our own so we could replace the scoreboards on the side.
And can you remind me, Stephanie, when does that contract end for the replacement?
For these two?
Yes.
We're in year four of five, so...
Twenty-six, I think.
Twenty-six. Yeah.
Just making sure I'm in the right year here.
And so I've been talking to a lot of people about, I don't want to be the, I guess, the opposite side of everything, but I do want to express some concerns from the public. The two things that came up over and over was if we do this, actually, I should say there's three things. One is how are we going to sell the place out right now? Because we don't really fill the seats as it is. So just think about that. I put more effort than I've almost put into anything in my entire life trying to sell out the Scotty McCreery concert, and I couldn't do it. So I was bummed out about that. So that's one thing that came up very frequently. If we can't fill up the seats we already have, why would we add more? The second one was, does this benefit everyone in the city? And nothing's going to benefit everyone, but that's just a concern some people have brought up. So I just want to think about that. And then the last one came up a lot was what's our return on investment? And I know we're not a bank or an investment agency or anything like that, but what's it going to take to capture, recapture those costs? I just want you guys to, I would just ask for you guys to think about those things. And I'm just passing on those concerns from the citizens.
The thing the public doesn't realize is what the Corn Palace doesn't bring into the Corn Palace, what it brings into the whole community as a whole. I mean, gas stations, hotels, restaurants, grocery, they're the ones that benefit from the Corn Palace. And the Corn Palace benefits from having the events, but the true people that benefit from it are the businesses because these people wouldn't be coming to town if there wasn't an event at the Corn Palace.
With this added seating, would it qualify us to host some of the state high school events that we're not able to?
They thought they did, and they thought that that would...
What's that?
Yeah, they thought that, we talked to Corey Adlin on it, and he said...
I think we'd want to talk to Aaron because I think he's got the list of all the requirements. Aaron, the events manager, he's got the list of everything.
Corey Adlin has a better idea than Aaron does.
Well, Aaron's got everything where you need like a certain number of motel rooms, you need a certain number of restaurants, or else you can't bring state...
Year-round, get some of them. We have a lot more hotels than Aaron does.
One of the things that I would say in opposition or, I read some of the comments on Facebook today about the concerns. And as I think about going to a concert, if I'm not going to enjoy sitting in the seat that I have been paying for...
Oh, I agree with that.
And so that's one of the reasons why I think in the short term, if you just did the seats that we already had, you could see what that change brings to the Corn Palace. One of the things that the Corn Palace has the opportunity in potential phases of doing this remodel is the opportunity for a better event. And that's something that I think that we have missed on, is that the events themselves could have some tweaks to them to make them just a little bit better. And if you make a little bit better event and have a consistent, better event every time, they'll sell themselves. And I think that was you who taught me that, Jordan.
Yes. Well, you know, I've said it, I've been saying it for a long time, is my goal is a great user experience. And I think a seat would probably definitely get us there. And I think if we keep doing that and keep selling more events and selling more tickets and losing less money, then I think you could really make the case that this would make a lot of sense. Because then I think you could, you could fill it up. Maybe I'm crazy, but user experience is always seems to be the path to the highest profit.
And if we were talking about monetizing, we're trying to make it so the project itself could be monetized. I think the two things you would want to consider then is a space that could be dedicated to an activity center of some kind year-round where we could collect a nominal fee to like a kids' activity area. And then also looking at some kind of way to capitalize on a space that allows for more activities during the summer. And so figuring out a different place for the gift shop as a year-round benefit, still having a place in the Corn Palace for it. But, or maybe it's shifted to one side of the floor or the other so you can still do activities on the other side of the floor.
There was one comment I was going to make when we were talking about the sales tax estimate above budget for '24 and '25. So I've been looking, and I would maybe encourage council to do the same, to look at '24 and '25 as one-time money, that 1.1 million as being one-time money. The reason why is you're going to have a debt service payment starting in 2026. And so really, that debt service payment for the lake could be absorbed into or could be paid for out of this increase in sales tax that we've experienced the last couple of years without having to make any other cuts to any kind of operations or any other future capital needs. So I guess you typically do that anyways when we have revenue that comes in above budget. In the past, council has designated that for future capital projects, and you do that more as a one-time spend, and you don't use it for operational needs.
Well, I'm going to just, this is going to be, probably come a little bit out of left field, but now that we have at the end of, down by railroad, the railroad park, one of the things that we might want to consider as a one-time spend would be to do some kind of a Christmas tree like what we have at this end. So how many years ago was it that we invested in this tree? Do you remember?
It was a year after we did the plaza.
Okay.
That helps.
It doesn't.
No, me either.
But I remember at the time, but this is what I remember at the time.
Six years ago. So that is probably...
Six? Yeah. Because I remember at the time, it was like a pretty significant outlay of money. Was it 30 or 40,000?
Thirty or 40,000 with the decorations. But now when you look at the cost savings over a long term without having that there, it's been a good investment.
Because we were spending at least 5,000 a year on the big tree that we would get brought in that was live and blah, blah, blah. So anyway, I think that now it would be nice if we did that same kind of a thing for down at, are we calling it Railroad Plaza, potentially?
There is going to be a request on the next city council meeting to name that green space that's south of railroad and Main, Railroad Plaza. Then you would look at Main Street. Now, on the north end, you have the Corn Palace Plaza. And on the south end, you have the Railroad Plaza. Main Street liked that idea because it also kind of captures the character down there with the Palace City Brewery and the depot, and they want to kind of play that up even more, so...
Yeah, currently, Hanson Will and Wagon has let us, or has brought down a nice wagon. And they've got some decorations. But certainly, it would be nice to have something that was a larger piece for the holidays. So I'd like to at least have that as something that we discuss.
Yeah, we did have someone stop in the office that says we need to put a tree there or something. Because in the wintertime, people might not know that we put grass there, and they might just drive directly onto that. That's something I hadn't considered before.
We have seen people do that in the Corn Palace Plaza. They come down the sidewalk like it's a road. So it's good that they put something in there for now. But that's not a bad idea to look at for future, too. I mean, that would be something we could do in the budget process or the supplementals in '25.
And I think, you know, when our goal is to draw people, to get them to stay in Mitchell longer, to support the businesses that are down there, if you're looking down the road and you're like, oh, wow, there's more, then something like that would certainly be a way to draw people down.
Stephanie, if you can help me here. The interest that we get on our money in our bank, what we took in in '23, is that at your fingertips at all? And then what are budgets and where we're at this year?
I'm pulling it up here.
Perfect.
Well, we did increase the budget for '24 and '25, so I have one person to let me run. Sorry, it's going to take just a second. I just ran this report, but apparently it won't let me look at it since I'm not on my old, or on my desktop. We did increase the interest budget for 2024 and for 2025. But I know 2023, we were significantly over budget. That's going to go down when you start your lake project because you are applying some of your reserves towards that project. So some of that cash, you won't be collecting as much on cash that's not there. Okay, well, we'll see if it'll come up.
Okay.
What was the monthly payment for the lake?
Hold on. Oh, look, it didn't...
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I got this one. What in the world? I could estimate what interest was, but I think you'd rather actually see where we're at. Let me see if I can...
It's still in front.
Wait a minute. There we go. So our current budget is eight, did I say nine or eight?
Eight eighty-four.
Eight eighty-four. We've collected 1.5, so we're $700,000 over budget.
And this is 24?
24.
Is 23 at your fingertips, too?
Actually, I should have done this to begin with. Why didn't I do that?
I think it was, if I did remember right, I thought it was like 1.1. Would that be right?
I can tell you. I didn't realize it appeared to be. Oh, I did, didn't I? I can't see that far. Here we go. So here you can see, 2021, 22, 23. Again, because our cash balance grew. This was our current budget. I already showed you where we were year-to-date now, so that 730 is off. 2025, we budgeted 900,000. Maybe Jeff has a crystal ball to tell us what's going to happen with our interest rates next year. I do know it's going to go down as you start to spend cash towards those projects that you have earmarked, but...
And refresh me what the leftover money in 2023 went where?
It's sitting in general fund. That's why I said I would like council to designate additional funds towards future capital projects. I haven't looked at it in the last month or two, but it was somewhere between 5 to 6 million dollars that I would like you guys to designate as future capital projects. So when that interest income or sales tax comes in above budget, it's just sitting in general fund cash.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yep. Perfect.
And you had a question?
Yeah. What's the lake payment?
Lake payment, okay. Thank you.
And Stephanie is right. You know, it's no secret that the Fed's starting to bring the interest rates down. Where they're going to stop, it, I guess, everything I've been reading is it's not going to be fast, it's going to be a slow. And so there could be anywhere from 1% to 1 and 1/2 next year. And so there could be anywhere from 1% to one and a half next year, but that all depends on all the economic conditions and reports and so forth that comes in. So there's no sure thing, but if I was a betting man, I'd say it's going to go down south.
So we don't do a monthly payment, we do repayment twice a year. Sorry, I'm trying to get this up here. And we ended up doing this one, right? 16.8. Joe, do you know the current interest rate? Well, and actually, we had this to discuss at the next meeting for a couple of reasons. Originally, when we applied for, we were told we'd be able to apply for a 30-year SRF loan and it was going to be at a, I don't remember the interest rate.
3.75.
3.75. D A N R came back and said now they will not do the 30-year loan rate. They want us to do a 20-year loan rate, but the interest rate goes to.
3.5.
No, it was down now.
I think they shaved a quarter point, right, Joe?
I thought it, yeah, I thought it was more than that. I don't trust my memory right now. So we're going to have to have an updated, a discussion on what that payment looks like because if we can't do the 30, we pay $5 million less in interest over the life of the loan.
981. I don't remember that number.
16815900, okay.
Did you get the new rate yet?
Huh?
What was the new rate? Did Joe pull that up yet?
I'm trying to find it.
Okay. I'm almost certain it was three and a half percent.
You're almost certain of what?
That it was three and a half percent. It went from 30 years at 3.75 to 20 years at 3.5. It went from 3.75 to 3.5.
So annual payment on that. 1.178. So almost 1.2 million annual.
1.178?
1,178,872 based on this calculator I have.
And so monthly, that's divided by 12.
We don't, but we pay, we pay every six months, yeah.
Oh, good, sure, of course.
Which.
So that's why I said it's nice to kind of remember that that increase in sales tax that we've realized you'll be able to use as your debt service payment, but then you have, I think we figured your first debt service payment wouldn't be before 2026. I think we were thinking we'd go to bid in 25 and it's going to be a year of construction. We're probably not repaying till 26. So you have between now and 27 with that additional sales tax above budget to be doing other capital projects with. Is that clear as one? Okay.
Just real quick, Joe, is everything on schedule for getting the bid?
As far as I know, we've been having, it's monthly or bimonthly meetings just to keep up to date on how things are going. We have another meeting tomorrow afternoon with VAR.
The wetlands up in the Kelly, was that supposed to be done this fall, wasn't it?
Correct.
Are they done? I see they still got equipment up there.
They're working on the last area, which was the smallest area. They are having issues with their haul route being still wet, so it's going slower than anticipated. We still hope that they'll be able to finish up once the colder weather hits and things firm up, but they are behind schedule. But nine, I would say nine, 80 to 90% of the project is complete.
And I did just double check by going to the 20 years with a lower interest rate, it is saving about $5 million in interest.
Can I ask a question, Stephanie? Under Park and Rec, the cemetery expansion, there's just an empty space by the utilities and roads. Can you tell me about that?
That's because they don't know the dollar amount of it. I asked for an estimate. Really, we're doing the design of that this year, so they should have a better idea probably into 2025, but we just didn't even have an idea of what number to put in there.
I'm just going to, just because we're talking about, I know this is bouncing back, but I just remembered this, that I had someone talk to me about the corn palace and one of the things that they said that, I don't know, you know, we always put the design of the murals in the corn palace budget, is that correct? And truly, that is maybe something that is more of a, that wouldn't necessarily go towards their profit and loss statement because it's something that the city does, that brings people to us, that really isn't a part of their operations that we should hold against them kind of thing because it's something that we are doing for the community as a whole and not something that's affecting their profit and loss. So that's just a, I thought that was an interesting concept.
I understand where that's coming from because you've heard me say you can't make money off putting murals of corn on the building. However, it's going on to the corn palace building. Corn palace staff is doing the work, so it's an expense of the corn palace because of that. So it's just important to keep in mind that, you know, we do give, it's like $420,000 out of entertainment tax towards the operations of the corn palace. That's to cover those things that can't make money, right? We're a building that's open for free almost every day of the year, so.
And I think that's, maybe it's just something that we keep in the back of our minds when we're talking about the budget supplements.
And I think that's why we've always said that our ultimate goal, at least since I've gotten here in 2014, council's goal was always, we don't want to have the general fund subsidy anymore. And, you know, it used to be higher and it's less, but there's always going to be some funding required from entertainment tax unless you start charging admission into the building or you find someone to cover the cost of decorating, I guess.
Anything else or should we go, want to talk about the rental inspections or?
Kevin, maybe, oh, go ahead.
I just want, Joe, I really think we need to take a really, really, really hard look at the drainage. Pick one of those to just keep talking about them and we spent the money on the study and to do nothing. That doesn't work for me. Study, study, study and then do nothing, doesn't do anything. And these people are still going to come to us with, I mean, it's, it's just inevitable that it's going to happen again. So we need to pick, and I don't, I'm not putting you on the spot here, Joe, but need to pick one of these. I have a preference and I'm not even going to say it. And, and, and start getting the wheels moving on it. So I, I just think it goes back to again, bid timing. I mean, right now, I think there's five or six contractors out of Sioux Falls that's slowed down over there. This is, to me, a good opportunity for us to maybe get one of these done.
So what we've talked about in the past is wanting to come up with a master plan of those projects. So we kind of have a marching order that we're going to walk through, like what we've done with water and sewer projects. We also, so up until probably, it's probably been five years ago, our wastewater fees paid for stormwater improvements. We have been using 100% of that for wastewater fees. So everything we're doing in stormwater now is coming out of general fund, which, except for the debt service, I guess that's coming out of, out of sewer fund. We did, when we looked at, and Joe, feel free to jump in on here too, but when we looked at rate increases through 2027, when council looked at what we needed to do to adjust our fees, part of that was building in the ability to do some of these projects into the future and having a revenue stream to go to help fund those. I know, Joe, I don't know if you want to talk about that here, but you are working on at least two improvements that I know of, that we're trying to acquire land or to work on stormwater retention in some of those recommendations that you saw, but a lot of those projects are going to be major projects that we're going to have to probably do a debt service through an SRF loan and we're going to have to have a repayment source, you know, identified for that loan.
Yeah, that's a great summary. We have one project identified that we feel would be really good if we're able to get that accomplished, but we're just not ready to bring that to council yet. Then we're also looking at some other areas where we could benefit. Yeah, once, once we get a little further along, we'll bring those to council.
We haven't forgotten. It's, it's top of mind too. Yep.
I was just going to kind of comment too on, on, obviously, we've got several nice projects here that we could look at, but we, I'm sure people obviously realize the fact that the corn palace is our event center too. It's just not a tourist attraction. It's, it's our event center. And I have had several comments to me when, when it starts, when we start talking about it is, we, we need to upgrade it periodically. We know we need to, the utilities have got to get replaced. So if we're ever going to do anything additional to it, that would be the time to do it. So I, I would like to engage Robin and at least come up with a plan or two. And I like the soft seats. I think, I think we need to spend the money and upgrade our seats to show that we are committed to this, to this facility. So I think that's one, if, if there's other support, that's one I would really like to back. And that would start the process of, of maybe looking at the palace and what can we afford? What, what is it worth? I like the fact that we're, we're adding additional floor space. I'm sure we've got a, a business in town that would love to have some campers parked here and, and showcase them in the winter, just like every other large event center is able to do it and, but we can't because we just don't have it. And we know for years, we used to have the state tournament and we don't have anything close to that now. And, and these are times of the years that we have a lot of hotels that are empty. So I really like the fact of taking a good, hard look at the corn palace. I like the fact that we should engage and try to figure out the ice arena. If nothing else, we need a plan. And then from there we can go. And, and to maybe summarize Stephanie's thoughts on, on the, the payments, I would like to see a year or two that we take these multimillion dollar cushions that we have and, and be able to at least put a year or two of the payment out there to help us ease into those because, you know, we, we know we can afford it, but there's, there's just limited funds. And so this way we know at least we're jumpstarting this when the, when the payments start that we have at least a year or two setting aside. So that's, that's just my summary. And obviously, we can't finalize anything tonight, but that's, to me, would probably be a fairly decent plan.
I do want to bring up one other item that was added on to the list under the non-departmental from what I sent out during budget, and that is, and I don't mean to be bringing up a controversial subject, so please forgive me, but we have the opportunity, council just approved the seventh and main signal light. We have the opportunity that we could do a change order to add the equipment needed for first and main and kind of lock in that price at where we're at now. So you'll see I've added first and main signal lights as a potential item. That would be something that we could take like unexpended 2024 budget funds and roll to 25 as part of the supplemental process, but I don't think I would be doing staff service unless I brought that up because it is, you know, a high priority for traffic, for public works and just with the continual problems that they have there. The fact that we have an existing bid that we could purchase another set because we have a unit price bid for the other intersection, you would have a limited time to do that. So just doing my part, bringing that one up.
One more thing I wouldn't bring up, just to throw out there, is the phase three of the, of the golf course. It says 1.558. The one thing that's left out is, and kind of speaking out of turn, but this year's thing was, was 500,000 of that was going to be from private funds, half of it. And, and, and the golf course has been very, very busy, so the other 250,000 from the golf course. So a third of it would be thrown in, so we'd have money. And the reason, what they would be doing is building a short course. It's so busy this year, they did, they did rounds I never thought was reachable in Mitchell. And that, a lot of that's the September, October weather, but they're, they're already at 36,000 rounds, which is, that's, yeah, I didn't think that was reachable in Mitchell. So it's getting used and, I mean, I'm going to guess two years ago, it was 23,000 rounds and maybe three years ago. And, but the short course is for kids, everybody wants kids to play golf, but when they, when they got to follow them, they don't want them out there. And that's just the way of life, that's every course. The short course would give them a par three course, basically. They give the kids a place to practice, to go where they wouldn't get bothered. You can practice on a hole, depends what it's set up. We got two, two areas for it. And I could, could, where the bowling alley, bowling, lawn bowling was and the north side and, and you got the houses, you got north of 10 and then the old, you go up the, the south side of the driving range. We got, we might have the biggest driving range in the state and it gets used a lot. But you could use the south side to go up there and then the old driving range, which is between 15 going west to the houses. That area is vacant. And, but it's just something for people to practice, for kids to use, for kids league. He was so over, there were so many kids there, he didn't have, he didn't have enough workers. He was getting a golf team to help because it's just a growing phase right now. And, you know, a little bit what George, you said earlier about it doesn't affect for many people. That's almost everything that we do in quality of life, hockey, tennis courts, swimming pool. Swimming pools affects everybody about much. You know, baseball parks, it don't affect everybody. You put them all together, it's quality of life. That's, in my opinion, that's what gets people to move to town. I heard about come to Mitchell. If you have, you know, if you have very nice baseball parks, very nice tennis courts when they get refinished here, indoor swimming pool, outdoor swimming pool was built right about time, just finished when I moved here in O.A. And, but that's why people pick a city is we're on the interstate, we're the closest thing there is to between Sioux Falls and Rapid City. And it'll draw people here and that's the thing they're going to look at. School district's the other one, school. Now that with what we're building there, facility there, that people are going to choose Mitchell because of that. And this is my personal opinion, but anyway, so I'd like to see us take a look at that in the next few years and not let it, forget about it. And I wasn't at the last board meeting, I was out of town, but the, Lakeview, so unless Kevin has something else that went up to add to that, but that's where it's at on the, on the phase three.
And how much is it? One, one, it's on the first page of the budget.
1.5. 1.558.
So I have a question. When, what was the number of, you said you, I don't want to make this sound bad. You said there's a certain amount of money you recommend we spend to get us to capital reserve.
Yep.
I don't want to make it sound like we're just going to waste a bunch of money, okay?
What I would like council to do is designate in general fund reserves, $6 million towards future capital projects. I can schedule that probably for the second meeting in December, just because we have a short agenda timeline tomorrow. But it's really just action to designate $6 million of general fund reserves towards future capital projects. Council can then undesignate that at any time with, you know, just a simple motion. You can add to it or like you did with the lake, you can take money out of that towards another project as well.
You said 6 million?
6 million. I, I need to look at it again, but the last time I looked, it was between five to six million to get us down to the, the council's current goal is to be between 30 and 35% general fund reserves. And the last time I looked at it, five to six million would get us back down to that stated goal.
Okay, so then to, to follow up with what Jeff said, you think the seats are important, so I'll follow up with that. You guys seem to think that we should probably follow up with Robin and get some pricing for that.
I would say so.
We didn't talk much about tennis courts, but I know that was.
Ice arena roof.
Okay, ice arena roof. What else do you guys?
Jumping on to tennis courts, I think it'd be a great opportunity. Maybe it'd be way too much going on out there at one time. Kevin would probably know better, but if we could get, get on the hook for the pickleball, I know we're getting ready to make some decisions there hopefully. And the same people that do that do tennis courts. So it'd be great if we could maybe combo something with that and get a better price.
Did we already do that bid?
No, no, yeah. No, ESPN's drawing up the stuff. We're supposed to have that information soon this push.
Is that, is that one that's also a unit price, Joe?
Yep.
Okay. So to answer your question, Mike, if they do that bid as a unit price and the price point comes in good, you could potentially change order. Oh, they are. I thought you said they were the same, okay. Oh, they are. I thought you said they're the same. Okay.
The same guys do them, though. We haven't had that conversation.
Just small, small surface area.
Right.
So if we're looking to utilize $6 million in funds?
No, not utilizing $6 million in funds.
Designate, sorry.
So designating funds in reserve is one action. If council decides to add things into the budget in 2025, that can be done through the supplemental appropriation process for revenue that we receive above budget in 2024. Really 2 distinct items.
Okay. But I guess I'm just looking for what direction you guys want. What do you guys want me to work on figuring out pricing and for? What is the most important? It sounds like Corn Palace, the seats, the ice arena roof.
I agree with Mike that there should be some designation for future capital improvements to the drainage system.
Okay.
In some capacity. Obviously, I don't think all of it, but at some percentage.
One thing I, it's not on you, Stephanie, one thing we didn't bring up was the gentleman that's willing to donate some money for a shooting range. We don't want to leave him out. It's an opportunity for us to, we're not taking advantage, but that's not the right word, to utilize a gentleman that's willing to help us out with a very important project that I think the community goes back to quality of life. I think it would be huge for the, I don't like that word either, but it's huge for maybe bringing people into our community and keeping them here.
That's what, the gun range?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what is it, 500,000?
Actually, we talked about that the other day in our meeting, but just forgot about it.
Yeah, there's a limit to those funds, so we do need to utilize those.
Does anybody?
By that deadline. We're working on it. We just talked about it today, Joe.
I really should have had that included because that has been discussed by council before. Does anybody have any idea what you're talking about for a dollar?
500,000.
Okay. Like he's covering 100% or like the city obligation?
He would donate 500,000.
Oh.
There is a deadline to it, so we need to-
What's the deadline?
Half is next year, December, and the half is the following year. So that is a very good point. I'm glad you brought it up because we need to get ripping on it.
And so I need to go back to the drainage comment. So for me, I think that, you know, having that master plan, so we have our priority list of what we're tackling and the funding revenue identified is going to be important because if we're just asking for it to compete with general fund dollars, I think it's going to be difficult to make it happen. So we need to either identify how that's coming out of our rate structure that we've already proposed to council, or you're going to have to start budgeting a million dollars a year towards drainage improvements to get enough funds there. So I think that's really kind of two-facet, or two-pronged approach to that. We look at what that priority list is and that master plan, and then also how we need to go about funding it so that we continue to make progress on everything. We don't just let it go.
So I'd say it was the ice arena roof, the Corn Palace, and the whole shooting range. And there's one other one, wasn't there?
I have the seats. Follow up on the pricing for the seats. Follow up with Robin, the architect of the Corn Palace, to have him get us everything, at least some-
General numbers.
General numbers and what would be included in that. The ice arena, drainage, gun range. Is there anything else you guys would like? You guys decide how to spend the money, and then we, I got to figure out how to do it the best way.
We talked about a Christmas tree down at the railroad plaza.
And I really think if that's a council, if that's, are you talking 24 or 25?
That's an eBay.
So honestly, if that's something council wants to do, we'll build that into the supplements for 2025. That's an easy one to do.
Is that something that we would just take out of their?
Entertainment tax, yep.
Yeah, entertainment tax, yeah. So.
That's easy as hell.
I know. And I just want to make sure that it's not at the expense of the ongoing progress of the plaza by the Corn Palace.
I also think that there could be other decorations, Christmas-related, or otherwise, that you could look at for a more year-round solution.
Yeah, so that brings me up to one thing. So quite a few people asked me about Hitchcock Park lighting that goes through that center portion, and we had discussed, you could put outlets on those poles, and then you could put Christmas trees next to that, so then you could shut those lights off and just have like a little Christmas tree alley. And that'd be really nice, and we do have a lot of vandalism in that park. So, you know, if you guys would look into doing that, I think that'd be really cool. I think the current bid was like 240,000. Does that sound right? 200, look at this, I'm getting pretty good. Remember these numbers? That would help with vandalism and also just, it's our biggest park, so that's kind of cool. And if we could have some outlets in there, too, you could have a really cool Christmas drive-through. Imagine how cool that would be, right? Drive-through there, and there's Christmas trees on both sides.
And it is dark, like-
If you could just start something big, it could be like, what do they call the one in, is it?
Sioux Falls, you mean?
Yeah, Sioux Falls.
There's like 3 of them, but yes.
There's a big one, though.
There's the Falls Park, there's Yankin Trails has one.
You get a little radio station going with the song and then flashing the lights.
That would be really fun to start at.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I certainly think that getting lights in Hitchcock Park would be a good thing as well.
Do you want us to put that on the list, Joe?
All right, should we go to rental inspections? That'll probably take a little while, I think.
Is there anything else before we wrap this up? I just want to make sure I have my homework done. Good? Good? Yep?
So this also ties into budget discussion as well. We, the conversation that council has had so far is if we take this on, would we want to hire staff internally to do rental inspections? We do know that proposed revenue could cover a portion of the cost, probably not all of the cost, but we also think that, that the, sorry, that the person could also be used for code enforcement duties because we always have a backlog of that. So that's kind of the background that I have.
Probably, if we hired another guy, he could probably do half of that and half the code because we could use another code enforcement officer, half for sure. After talking to Ryan, he's got plenty to do, I know that.
I'll go from here. So I talked to Mr. Johnson, our attorney, and he wanted some direction from us to figure out. Because there's so many different towns, we could just pick and choose our favorite parts and eliminate the parts that we don't like. So he's looking for some direction from us to see, before he drafts any sort of preliminary ordinance of what we wanted to do, what would be included in that. I only know from Huron, they basically inspect for fire extinguishers, fire alarms, make sure your windows work, make sure there's no exposed electrical that could start a fire, make sure you have, you know, electrical is up to, is safe. Make sure you have P-traps, so there's no methane, gas, simple stuff like that. So if that's, I don't really know anything else about any other towns, how that works, but that'd be the only baseline I have for anyone.
How many rental units do we have? Anybody know?
I did actually provide a comparison that, this went out to all of council. Justin has it, Joe has it, Mayor has it, of a revenue calculation that Mike provided, as well as comparison to what other city ordinances and other cities had done as well. I have that pulled up if anyone wants to look at it, but.
So what's that say? So 3,100, 3,122?
This is done, and I think Mahi Dogastana kids did this. So this was in 2020. So since that time, I know there's probably 10 to 12 duplexes been built. Apartments, I know there's a 10plex that was built, a 6plex that was built.
The Ramada, just added 100.
The Ramada. And I don't know how we handle the Corn Palace Inn moving forward because I've been told they've come off the bid. So are they an apartment where they would be in this inspection program?
With the program not being in existence yet, it's hard to say. But essentially, the way that they're, we understand that they're going to be operating, it's essentially going to be an apartment.
Okay. So, I mean, we may have added 400 to this with, I don't know how many the Ramada ended up being, but.
Just under 100, I think.
91, what was built for it.
Plus approvals for TIFs and groundbreaking on another 200-unit apartments in total.
So this was actually my wife that did this. She had a thing with Bob working on it. Yeah, she's way smarter than that. What's that? Sorry.
2020.
2020, so it's 4 years old, and we're getting another one coming online here next year, whatever. But I like, Vermaian's a little bit over the top, Marty just read it here. But I like that we have something to work off of, so Justin has a little bit of a guideline that we can tweak ourselves. We don't have to maybe get so picky as what they are. But it's, to me, it's just, it's time. We've talked about it and not done it, and I'm, I'm in the rental business with my wife. We get a lot of phone calls from people talking about, man, this is crazy that this is all the best, the best that Mitchell can offer. And we're a college town, we're 2 college towns, basically. And these kids come in here and they rent sight unseen, part of that's on them. But when they get here, they're really frustrated, and they're like, this is Mitchell? So I just, I just think it's time that we at least, we don't know if we don't do it, but we at least have to consider doing something to clean it up.
And when I think about when I moved to Mitchell, one of the things that I struggled with was finding a good apartment. And overall, it left a question in my mind of, is this the town that I want to live in? Because if you can't find a good place to live, and I'm a single person who didn't have a family, I can't imagine if I would have had a family at that time. But the places and the choices that you had, it's like, oh, yeah, I could find an apartment, but it was not of quality of living that I thought would subject myself to. And then also, as I talked to students at both Mitchell Tech and Dakota Wesleyan, the 2 employers that I've had in my time in Mitchell, the number of horror stories that I've heard from students who have no place to go because they've signed a lease, and even if they signed a lease, the apartment at some point, either by their fault or the landlord's, became uninhabitable. They had really no place that they could turn to without a lawyer, and most college kids themselves do not have the ability to seek legal repercussion or remedy. And so I think that's one of the reasons why this is so important to me, is it allows for the opportunity for a course other than that. And then also, I think it gives landlords themselves some protection because if we're inspecting them and then they have an issue with a tenant, suddenly they can say, well, on this date, it was inspected and that wasn't an issue. And so clearly, it is on the tenant or the renter that caused that issue and fault.
And if we do have good quality of places to live, I mean, after they graduate, they're more unlikely to stay here, too, if they're, I mean, we want people to stay. They're living in a, you know, junk hole, they're not going to stick around.
I was, I attended the Dakota Wesleyan. Dr. Kittle invited some of us to come. You were there, too.
I was in your, that class, yep.
And we had that discussion with some of those kids from the university. And at least some of them had shared those concerns that finding appropriate rental places was difficult and not ideal. Can you explain to me, so the total revenue, that's our income. Is that what I'm reading this going across, let's say Vermillion, let's just take Vermillions? So per structure, $30, so that gives you the revenue, the per-unit fee. So anyway, tell me, and then what are our expenses? I feel like where's the expenses?
Your expense, well, that's not on there. This was just the proposed revenue based on the different fee comparisons if you're using Vermillion Brookings or Huron. I think expenses, you could anticipate between 100 to 120 when you factor in wages, benefits, all the other stuff, work comp, you know.
So we're not going to cover our expenses?
No. But it's a-
Cover a lot of it, though.
And let's face it, that, most of the towns our size have more than one code enforcer, too. And as Kevin brought up, we're overworking the one we've got because we've got too many projects and not enough time, not enough hours in a day. And that comes back to what everybody's talking about of how is Mitchell presenting itself? You can't clean it up enough.
So in my mind, it's just a decision as to whether or not council sees this as a priority. If this is something you want to see in the community, then it's a budget item, just like you do everything else, right? Yes, if it costs us $40,000 in addition to the $80,000 revenue, that's the cost we're going to pay to have that service available within the community. So if the direction from council has moved forward with us, direct staff to start doing that, and we will.
I mean, I just don't think that we can mess around with this any longer. I know that, didn't you say, Mayor, that you've had discussions with some of our rental property owners who are saying, we'll step up our game? Well, this is just a way to put their money where their mouth is and make sure that they're doing what they say they'll do.
Yeah, I've heard from, some people think it, everything's split, right? So some people think it will do nothing, which it may, because we're looking for safety, but not necessarily old carpet that's stained, not necessarily cabinets that are gross, not dented-up kitchen sinks and refrigerators. So, you know, it's more of a safety aspect than a cleanliness aspect, which is more important, I think, you know.
If they have safety, they'll clean, I mean, that's part of cleaning it up, too, I think.
Well, you could add a smoke alarm and change some breakers and still have disgusting carpet. You know what I mean? So that may not be a separate thing.
But if they have conditions where rodents are able to come into the building, I mean, that would be something that we would need, I mean, that's more than just aesthetic, it's, you know.
No, I, yeah, I agree. I agree fully. I have no problem with this, and doing it in Huron is fine with me. And, you know, like I said, they caught me when I forgot to put smoke alarms in one apartment. Totally on me. We installed them, no big deal. So it's nice. It makes you feel better that your tenants are safe, you know.
If you wanted to look at this, this is a sample of the checklist that Vermillion uses. I did get several other samples that I believe I have provided to everyone before.
That's a good one. So can you scroll back up to the top? So like, in Huron, you have to have, and I don't mean to use that, but that's the system I know. But like in a bathroom, you need to have, to either have a window or a fan that vents to the outside to reduce mold. So that's one thing that I forgot to mention. That was really good. Eagerest windows is another thing to make sure no one's living in the basements. That's another safety deal. What else? Hardware backup, smoke alarms. Yep, so you have to have that. Carbon monoxide downstairs, yeah, handrail. That's the same thing for most houses. Roof leaks.
For me, it was kind of helpful to see a couple of these checklists, just so you could kind of see what people are looking for when they were going into other cities.
And as a landlord, it's nice because I go through the walkthroughs at the same time, and then I can see what I need to fix. Like, oh, man, I didn't notice that, or there's a broken window here, or someone spilled Kool-Aid on the carpet there, or whatever the case is, you know, so it's nice, too.
And you can even see at the top, they're anticipating that landlords are going to use this as a way to make sure that they're compliant with what's in the requirements.
The 2 biggest pushbacks I've heard were, one, is they're going to pass this on to the tenant. It's like a dollar a month or something, so I think most tenants would pay the dollar. I would just absorb that $1 and not pass it. Your rent's going to be $472 a month, or whatever the case is. And then the other pushback is some tenants may feel like it's an invasion of their privacy, which I don't see that. I've never seen that, I guess. You just, when you live in an apartment, usually it's in the lease that your apartment's going to get inspected at least once a year.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Yeah, my daughter's got an apartment in Vermillion. It gets inspected, when school's out and Christmas break, it gets inspected twice a year, and they know it.
But some landlords don't. My dad was just telling me a story about a house in Mount Vernon where the landlord hadn't been in the house for 30 years. And they went in the first time, they're like, well, I guess I got to rip this down because the roof's been leaking for 10. So that's pretty crazy, but.
This is Brookings.
It does bring a good level of responsibility.
I think what I would like to see is a task force put together of maybe a couple council members, a couple landlords, Mayor, Justin, just to sit down at a table and talk about, these are the things that we would like to see, what things, because otherwise, if we don't have buy-in from them, it will become a brawl, and I definitely want to have everyone on board with a policy that is for the betterment of Mitchell and the safety of all.
Do you guys, I was trying to, I got one landlord that messaged me, just thought about it, and I was going to read the email, but I can't find it. Do you guys have any guidelines you would like to set, or at least we could start looking for?
Well, if you had a task force, I mean, they could get a, set something up and then set up a structure for us and bring it to us. We could go over and say, if we like this, we don't like that, or if we like everything, or.
Really, that's going to be the biggest thing, is deciding what kind of standards we want to enforce. And then once I've got that, it's not going to be that difficult to get it into ordinance form for the whole council to take a look at.
And when I looked at the checklists of those other cities, they're all really pretty consistent. It's not like somebody's doing something above and beyond what anybody else is. All of their checklist forms look the same.
I would encourage that it's a pretty comprehensive checklist. I mean, if it's easily passed with a lot of things, why the bother? So I'd encourage that it's pretty thorough in inspection. And I'd also encourage that we charge what we need to. I mean, if it's $2 instead of 1 to help us out, charge 2, charge 3.
Well, and potentially, if we have that many more units than we used to- Well, and potentially, if we have that many more units than we used to have, then our revenue may be higher.
So is the intent, or I know the task force will figure this out, but generally, do you get inspected once a year up in Huron, Mayor?
Once every three years.
Once every three years, so it's not necessarily every year then?
No, they break it up into sections.
All of them are a little bit different.
Some are every two years, some are every four years.
I think to do it every year is just unreal.
Yeah, as many as they have, you'd have to do 10 a day.
I think when I looked at Brookings, they were on a rotation, but then if they received a complaint, it would trigger an earlier one.
Yeah, within 48, 48 hours, yep. So then there's someone to actually field those complaints to, which is good.
If there's another 400 apartments, since they've done that study, that'd be another $12,000, so it'd be pushing $100,000.
And one, one of the things that I had talked to a landlord about was building in a mechanism about false reporting as well. And so to protect the landlord from having the fear of harassment, that if somebody were to complain about something that they felt wasn't up to code, that there be some kind of like small fee associated with that as well, $20, $30, something like that, as a way to like prevent somebody from calling. He referenced a neighbor that I used to have that would call me in every week for my lawn not being mowed the day after he had mowed his lawn. And so something to prevent that from happening, shout out Glenn.
I don't know if I would do a fee, that may seem like it would discourage people from making a complaint, you know what I mean? Like, oh, I don't know, if you're, I mean, how would you answer that phone call, I guess? If it's not real, we're charging you 30 bucks, it'd be, whoa, whoa, whoa.
That would be a discussion. That should be a discussion between the owner and them, not between the city and them.
I would think that this, if this, the city, the new employee would say, I'll send you a checklist, let me know if it violates any of those checklists. If it does, then we'll come and follow up. If it doesn't, then it's probably not one of those things.
So Vermillion is every two years, Brookings is every two to four years, Huron is three years. And all of them have a, it looks like a complaint-driven component.
In, in general, you don't pay until you're inspected?
They send you a, no, they send, every year they send you...
Oh, so it's an annual fee?
It should be a yearly.
Oh, it's an annual fee?
You, you pay annual and then inspected tri-annual or whatever that number is. So I get a thing in the mail that says, this is whatever you have, this is how many units you have, you write them a check, and it's like 280 bucks or something a year for me.
I like that.
So are we looking to try to completely pay for the new employee with these fees? Or is it just a partial, or? John seems to like the whole, the whole.
The only way to really know how many we have is to have somebody get it from the county, because that's where this information came from initially. And they will tell you, you know, they're, they're a little slow with the county getting these online sometime, so you don't see it online, you have to go there and ask. But I just, I'm just saying that number because I know the, the industry, I know there's been a, a pretty good boom in building of rentals.
Well, you could even just look at the tiffs that we have, and like flats on havens probably wasn't included in that estimate, and that's open. We've got some of the ones up on Fiala Road that are shown every year through the...
Atimo.
That they're rental, the Atimos. Yeah, so it's probably more than what's showing on the sheet, I agree.
Well, definitely.
Are you recommending through condition your wife as part of the task force?
It's either you or her.
She would probably actually do that, and I know she's probably watching, she would probably, uh, this, this isn't the first time this has been tried, just it was maybe tried, maybe a little bit more behind closed doors. That's why I waited, so it came here, and it was one of my goals, is to get something like this done. I just think it just makes our community so much better if they're begging to move into your apartment because they've heard how good it is.
So I think part of that study or that committee group is to get a closer cost estimate of actual expenses and projected revenue. So at least you guys know what you're going to be spending annually, right? And then when you determine at what level you're going to do inspections and the frequency, then we'll know, is this person 100% going to be busy with rental inspections all the time, or is there going to be some downtime that then we have them do code enforcement too, because then that would be a general fund contribution? Or maybe you need more than one, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure here on, the guy that does the inspection also does all the code enforcement.
Brookings, I know they only have one person.
It's one guy that does both jobs.
Oh, more efficient.
He doesn't seem always happy to be inspecting apartments either, so.
I'm talking about our guy.
I'm not. It's a lot of work, I mean, walking through every apartment, I mean, man, writing a report, digitizing it, sending it on.
Right, so just for reference, if these numbers are correct, by the 3,122, you worked every single week, five days a week, you'd be inspecting 12 homes, or 12 rental units a year. So just kind of put that in.
12, 12 a...
A day.
A day?
Yeah, yep, 12 a day.
If you were to do it every year?
If you worked, if you worked 52 weeks, five days a week.
But if you did it every other year, it'd be six, six a day.
Per day. Right, so just...
That's not, that's not that bad.
Just to put that in perspective on, you know, also doing code enforcement and other things.
And I appreciate your dedication, Joe, but most people probably also want a day off or two every once in a while.
But you said five days a week, you still get 160 days off a year, how much does someone need?
So the, the Brookings, City of Brookings has a really good flow chart that they use for their inspections, whether it's a scheduled inspection or whether it's one that was complaint-based. So scheduled or done as scheduled, if it's a complaint base, they do it within 72 hours. If they find a violation, then, you know, it goes into one of these three tiers. And then if they get compliance, then they're okay. If not, then they have to do additional action until they get compliance.
Yeah, so that'd be the other arm, we'd have to figure out, what if they just refuse to fix it? What's the disciplinary action? Is it...
There is something laid out, there's...
Is it like you basically condemn, because I feel like in, in Huron, if you don't do it, they basically forcibly move out the tenant and then you are not allowed to rent that.
Well, there would be a, I guess, I don't know if that's the correct term, certificate of occupancy.
That's what they did in Brookings, it looks like.
The fire department used to check, I don't know if they still do, but they used to check apartments every year, and they'd walk the hallways, and then they'd check motels the other year. So Marius was going through, and he, I caught him in both places. And, and the stuff that, I didn't know was up there, like an exit light, he gets up there and he pulls it up, it's not even wired.
Yeah, that is something they do in Huron as well.
And so he was there, but he went to the fire department, went through every year, hallway, not departments, making sure safe doors, and...
So on the Brookings flow chart, they do do an unlawful to occupy if they don't comply?
I know, I know in Vermaine, and there would be a list, this is how it's ran, they, they have it, then it goes to the city's website. And on Vermaine, they call it black balls or whatever, so you go on that list and you're checked as non-compliance. So if somebody's, this goes back to the kids that are trying to rent, that don't live here, don't want to take the time to come here, they can look at that and say, this guy's been non-compliant two or three times in one year, I'm not even going to call him, or her, I shouldn't say that, whoever. So, so it's really advantageous to those kids that are coming here that don't know what they're getting into.
So they would go onto like a website and say, here's all of our apartments for rent, and then it'd almost be like a grading system, and then they'd go, oh man, this guy got compliant seven times, like, they may be compliant now, but I don't want to take that risk.
Here's your inspection report, right there.
Yeah, yeah, I have that too, I look at it. Some of them are really simple things, but then there's some really crazy, just long, like I think if somebody had 12 things they needed to fix, it was on Cherry Street.
And so again, I think that the correct next step is a task force of some kind, so...
So if you were going to tell me what items you wanted the task force to solve, what would they be?
The idea would be to put together the policies, procedures, in relating to rental inspections.
To me, you look at all the, all the other towns and pick the best of, of what the other towns do.
Yeah, I really think it's focusing on what those inspection standards are going to be, which items are you going to be looking for and which ones are you not.
And, and the budget.
Yeah, budget for revenue and, and expense. Frequency, how often we're doing them. And then also...
Do you guys have any guidelines you'd like us to start with, or do you want the task force, Tim's going to be on the...
I think the best practice is to look at what other cities are doing and make a comparison from there, and then you can discuss. It, it's kind of nice when somebody else has already started a process, so you can point to another public entity using the same procedures.
I think we look at, I think you'd have them look at Huron, Vermillion, Brookings.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Brookings and Vermillion are college towns, so they would be people that we would, or places that we should, like, kind of hone in on their...
And you want this task force to be...
Probably one meeting, two, to give the city direction, city staff direction.
And you wanted it comprised of, what was that, again? The council people, mayor, landlords?
Probably our lawyer.
Nah.
I think, I think, you know, staff can make sure we've got our representation there as needed. I think getting the elected officials and who you want representing the landlord community would be the most helpful.
So if anyone's a landlord and wants to be on this, reach out to me.
So on the same subject, me and the mayor have had a discussion on the homeless population. What truly is the homeless population in Mitchell? We've heard, what constitutes being homeless? Staying at a buddy's house, I guess, if you don't have home to go to, yeah. So I want to make sure that we're on, something like that is on our radar, and I, I really like, me and the mayor, I really like Tara Valeski's, I don't know what she calls her house, but Oxford House. I really like that, that format.
That is a good idea.
Because it holds them accountable. Yes, we're willing to help you, but you also have to help yourself, because we don't want to turn into this place where we have a homeless shelter and, well, everybody come to Mitchell because there's a homeless shelter. They'll help us.
Can you give them a rundown on how that works, if you guys aren't familiar with?
Yeah, so the, the little bit I know about, because I had an employee live in this house, they have a structure of, there's a president of the house, there's a secretary and a treasurer, and from what he explained to me on Sunday nights, they do UAs, so urinary analysis for drug and alcohol. If you fail, you're out. You're out of the house, immediately, pack your stuff, you're gone. I just think that, we all know that there's always an underlying condition with a homeless person. And, and I'm not here to demean them in any way, everybody has their thing, but we have to, I just, just literally went through this with a homeless gentleman living behind my apartment. And we tried helping him along, and I won't say what the solution became, what, what somebody told me to do, but it didn't, to do that is kicking the can down the road. So I don't know, the gentleman from, came up here and he spoke, and he said there was approximately 50. This was over a year ago, he said it, from Salvation Army guy. So I don't know if that's an accurate number, I have no idea, and maybe Dean would have a little better accurate idea of dealing with these gentlemen and ladies and where they're going, where they're staying. One thing I don't like is, I was told, well, send them to the police station, they'll get registered, then the churches will help them. They're not going to go to the police station, they're not going to do that. I mean, there are, probably, some of them may have warrants out for them, they're not going to go check in to go get help, at least I don't think they would. It just does, to me, that doesn't make sense. And, and I know the churches want to help them, and they can't just let anybody into the church, but I would love to hear what Dean has to say.
So, it, it depends on what your definition of homeless person is. I mean, that, that is, you know, basically I haven't told you about where it's from, anybody that doesn't have a place to stay, or anybody that doesn't have a place to call their own. I can tell you from, speaking about patrol officers, Mitchell is a very generous community to the transient population. It's no one in the summertime that just go to Mitchell and stop, the churches will help you, Salvation Army will help you. And we get to some of the people that come back year after year to do that. I do agree with the Oxford House, it is a great tool, I mean, it's a sober house, we have no problems with it. They really do police themselves. Not only do they do the weekly UAs, but I've been told that if they suspect that it's under the influence, they help you, you have to do a email right there, and if you refuse, they'll get you out. I know that they, there is a little legal room in them, where everybody slips up. I think if you're honest with them, and don't try to hide it, and reach out for the help that they need, I mean, they're, they're there to help each other, they know a little, basically. I, I don't know, I don't know what the, the problem is, because, you know, we all hear about Sioux Falls and their homeless population. I, I don't want to see Mitchell turning that either. There does need to be, maybe a little bit of dewaying or a problem, solving model that we can come up with, but without being, someone that's going to invite more, more homeless people to our community. I don't have the right answers.
I have a question. How many of the homeless shelters, like, let's just take Sioux Falls for example, are there homeless shelters supported by the city, or are they privately, I mean, I'm thinking Bishop Dudley House must be privately run? Are, what communities have a city-owned and operated homeless shelter?
I can tell you that the Bishop Dudley House is not city-run or owned, that it is funded privately through very generous donors. And I think they also have a very similar mentality, that they're trying to help people up, not give handouts. And so I've done some volunteer work with that organization, and I think that their model is a little bit less aggressive than Tara's model of the Oxford House, but trying to figure out ways to help people get on their feet, not necessarily a solution that I think Mitchell's big enough for, unfortunately, or I guess fortunately, that we don't have the problem that Sioux Falls has. But it's definitely a population that we have to consider. I certainly think, and have supported, other organizations that want to privately do something, with the million questions that that then brings, but it's certainly a population you have to think about.
Yeah, I just think that we need to be cautious, because while I'm truly sympathetic to people who struggle with homelessness, I don't know that it's a public, publicly-supported structure that we, I mean, even our home, even our safe house, our safe place is privately, you know, the city doesn't, we give them money through our subsidy requests, but we don't support them, you know, as a whole. So I, I think that we have to tread lightly here, because I think it's really something that is generally done in the private sector more than the public sector.
I, I agree, Susan, with you, but we are paying for it, through the police department. One way or another, we're paying for it. It's just a matter of, is there a structure, and I'm, I'm, I agree with you, I don't want to get into that, but I look at it as the Oxford House is transitional housing for them. Not staying there forever, maybe getting their stuff together, and maybe getting a job, providing for themselves, or maybe family that they have too, they're homeless. I mean, I know, someone told me there was a homeless family, three homeless. So, I mean, that's, that's sad. And I know there's a church group that's been working on it, and I think Dr. Joel Allen is on that committee, and they've been trying to work through a place to find a place for him to stay. And as we move into the colder months, I think we'll see more and more of this, that there'll be people looking for a place to stay. And like I said, I just like that word, transitional housing, there's nothing permanent about going to these houses and staying there and think you're going to stay there forever. You need to help yourself or move on.
Yeah, and I know that, I'm speaking just from our church, and I hate to, I hope I don't get in trouble, but I know that our church will help people set them up in a hotel for a period of time as needed, or whatever, you know, help them to, you know, have a place, a bed to sleep in as needed, but certainly, once again, I think it's something that, maybe those are the, the resources that we leave it to.
Yeah, most churches do that, I think almost all churches do that, I met with them all across the street one day, so they all do that. And like what Mike said, is they request you go to the police station and register for some card or something, which really takes nothing, it's mostly just like a small barrier to get, get some assistance. And, and I have had a lot of people ask me this, and the two questions I always ask, because I don't know, is what is the real number? Because we don't know what problem we're solving, if we don't know what the actual problem is, and then what is the role of the government and what should it play in, in that role? And I don't have any answers for that, but those are the two questions I like to ask.
Dean, is there any way to know how many cards we've issued over a period of time?
So I'm not aware of cards, what we get requests for is, basically like when they, people go to the county for assistance, they have come, like, come to check, make sure that they don't have any warrants, or who they are.
And maybe that's what it is, maybe that's what it is, just a verification.
You know, we'll, we get times, like, people who want gas money, just driving through, they want gas money, they'll send the police department to actually verify that they do in fact have gas, and that they're not sitting on the road with gas now, or that they don't have enough gas to make... have gas, and they go to Sioux Falls or someplace else. That's what we get through requests. We don't get generally a lot of requests for people looking for assistance from us directly. We do help people when we need it, that, you know, if they're hitchhiking or they're sleeping on the bridge, if it's a cold night, we'll try and give them some help for a night or two. But we're not set up as a police department, and like you said, as our community, to provide a more than a one-two night solution to the problem.
Speaking from previous experience at the county, that is a requirement of county government, is to provide care for indigent within the county. So we had quite a lot of interaction with people either transient through town or living in town, but it was usually the county who was helping with those situations when I worked at Brookings County.
Any other discussion on it?
Just a clarification. I just noticed an email that you sent out about the gun range. The gun range that is currently proposed is not to the extent that we originally had looked at as...
I'm just sharing information.
No, I know. Yeah, I know, but I mean, I just wanted to clarify, is, because the, the project would include a six-hundred yard and three-hundred yard range with five bay each, a two-hundred yard range with ten bays.
I don't know if we have an estimate on a new gun range. All I know is there could potentially be a private sponsor for up to a certain dollar amount.
So my point, my only reason I'm bringing that up was just, I know what you're doing. I'm just saying, I don't think that our current plan would accommodate what this original plan for gun range was. Am I wrong about that?
I haven't heard the plan, so I don't know.
So...
I mean, it wouldn't, huh? It wouldn't be as big, am I...
First of all, you got to find a site to have it at, the first time.
I think Joe and I have identified a few potential sites. However, the neighbors will be the, we want to be a good neighbor. And I said, if, once we find a location, I would be willing to go around and knock on all the doors ahead of time, so people don't get a letter, and then, no, you don't want to get a letter, you're getting a gun range, obviously. So I would go around and knock on everyone's door and get a feel, at least, get our feet wet that way, and then we could work our way from there. So...
So Susan, as far as the current gun range design, I don't know what that is.
We don't know what that is.
We don't have a design. We do have a possible donor, and then I think there's also, I can't remember the name of the grant, but the grant would cover eighty percent, Joe? Does that sound right?
I believe it's Robertson Pittman.
Robertson Pittman grant would cover eighty percent.
And Joe, I mean, I...
And the other twenty would be covered by the donor, so it could essentially be free. Not free, but no cost to the city.
The reason I emailed that out is just a reminder of how much that cost estimate was, what was included in it, and the land at that time was free.
And the, but, yeah, okay. I will quit asking my questions, because I'm not being clear, but, okay.
I think it's also important to say that there is currently no location or plan of a gun range at this time. And so this was previous discussions that had happened, and we've since moved on from the location as specified in an email that we got. I don't want anyone to think we're going to pop up a gun range tomorrow or something.
No, no, no. We've just identified a few possible locations that we are working with the owner to maybe acquire. Very preliminary.
Any other business we want to talk about? All right, I think we had a productive meeting, and we'll be adjourned.